Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 7th Board of Selectments meeting. Seven o'clock, we'll have citizens input. Seven oh five, Recreation Farmers Market. Approval of Foxborough Recreation Farmers Market on the Common for seventeen Sundays, starting June 4th through September 4th. Nine AM to one PM. Seven fifteen, public hearing, restraint or removal of dog from Diana Ferreira, 23 Windsor Drive. Seven twenty-five, Police Chief Baker, discuss approved police policy in achieving state and Kayla accreditation. Seven forty, Marijuana Dispensaries, discussion of marijuana dispensaries in Foxborough, options to consider, possible vote. Seven fifty-five, Selectmen's Update. Eight oh five, Town Managers' Update. Eight fifteen, Assistant Town Manager Update.
She won't be here tonight, so that'll be all.
Take that one off the list. And then we have some action items. Abdul, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple minutes after seven. Is there anybody here for citizens input? See none, Jim?
Yeah, if it's okay with the board, I had a couple things that is important, if it's okay if I sit here rather than going to the other table. On a positive note, a couple times we've mentioned over the last month, a few months, taking down that building at Coacasset River Park. So a date has been set. It's gonna be on Wednesday at noon time on April 5th. And after tonight, we'll be notifying the victims that we know of and giving them that date. So two brief things, I just, on a positive note, wanted to talk about that. After one of our past meetings, several people, friends, had come to us, to the committee or to me, and offered their services free of charge. A.J. Dooley, I know many people know that name, is synonymous with community. He's providing all the dumpsters for the endeavor. Rich Pacella, and you know him as a volunteer water and sewer commissioner, he has a construction company, he's donating all the equipment to crush it up. Mark Sullivan is organized to get rid of all the material, the concrete, to be recycled. Mark Sullivan, our past selectman, and also one of the founding members of the committee. Ed Noonan, local fireman and also an electrician, which, believe it or not, there's still electricity going to that building, so he's coordinating to pull that off. So thank you to him. And then we're also probably looking at the DPW if they could in the spring, bring some Lomond seed, just to level off the area. So to me, this represents a true community effort, people stepping forward, not just to save the town money, but also for the spirit of giving back to the community. I also wanted to, the group that was kinda behind this for the last couple of years, this is a small part of what they do, but special thanks to Superintendent Deb Spinelli, Linda Walsh, Jeff Downs, Reverend Bill Dudley, firefighter Rob Lucas, Nancy Stockwell, Chief O'Leary, who's actually here tonight, and above all, Bob Correa, who's the chairman of, those people I just named were the Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, and on a weekly basis, if not biweekly, they've come together to protect the children, and it kinda happens quietly, but thank you to them. But also to the board, I wanted to request one thing, as part of our responsibility to the community for sexual abuse awareness, I wanna see if we can make our department heads aware. It's gonna be on a lunch hour on a Wednesday, if the word can go out to the staff, if you're a town worker to attend. Often, we go to ribbon-cutting ceremonies to celebrate the good thing, but where Bill Sheehan had worked in and for the rec. department in conservation, in the schools, before going to Florida for a long time, I think it's good that the community comes out to participate this. It gives a little bit of feedback to the victims if they choose to come, that the community is behind this, and it's another way of us saying sorry. So again, on April 5th, on a Wednesday, if we could make a point of being there.
That's it. Good stuff. Good stuff. Thank you. Seven oh five, right on schedule. Recreation Farmers Market.
It's always kind of a deduction. Heather and I are actually sharing glasses because one of us doesn't have a beer. Before I bring up tonight's issue, thank you for allowing us to be before you tonight. I'd like to introduce you to Heidi Stapleton and Manet Toachi, the newest members of Foxborough Recreation. They're both recreation coordinators, replaced the two longtime staff members that I had. They came aboard during a difficult time of lots and lots of programs, which isn't difficult, but it was a great thing, and they are doing a phenomenal job, and I'm glad they're here and that I was a part of the hiring process. You guys are happy, right?
All right.
Okay, now that we got that out of the way. Well, now that we got that out of the way, so we are here before you tonight to discuss our newest project, which is the concept of a farmers market on Foxborough Common. We have decided, as you'll see in your paperwork, that it's gonna run for seventeen Sundays, starting in June and ending in September. We've really done a lot of homework and put a lot of time into it, and we've come up with a vendor package that vendors will get. We've come up with a market manager's packet as well, so everybody will know what their jobs are, and I believe you have most of that. My role in this will be, I will be the market manager. I'll give Dave a run for his money up at Stop and Shop. The committee, the Farmers Market Committee is made up of myself, Heather, Jenna Strickland, and Heidi, and Manet, and Jim DeValice. This is a recreation program presented to the community as another method of passive recreation using Foxborough property, hopefully Foxborough vendors and local farmers and artisans. We've reached out to the Foxborough Community Garden and received their blessing, and we've also received great advice from longtime farmer Ed Lawton.
I need those blessings. Thank you. Heather Harding, Recreation Board member. So we think we have all the bases covered, but we just kinda wanted to fill you guys in. When we came up with the idea, we ran it by Bill Keegan and, of course, Jack Offlet to make sure, because it was on the Common, and they were both okay with it and thought it was a great idea. We spoke to some of the businesses up there, you know, got their support and input about what they thought would work and wouldn't work. We have a mission statement, and I'll just read it because I don't have it memorized. Our mission statement is, "To serve as a community gathering place where local farmers, producers, and artisans can offer fresh agricultural and related products, and to increase access to and education about the benefits of fresh, locally-produced, nourishing foods and other products of local labor. In addition, we strive to generate a sense of local pride, promote economic development in Foxborough, and improve opportunities for social and community building through educational, cultural, and family-friendly activities." I think Debbie said we're gonna run it on Sundays from nine to one on the Common. Most of the other area markets run Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, so we won't be in direct competition. In addition, a lot of the vendors, you know, go to all the local markets, so we can get some of the vendors that we really want. We will have a porta-party, not on the Common, but close by, probably between the old fire station and the old CVS building, kind of in that alleyway, because we're gonna, our intent is to just leave it there for the entire seventeen weeks and have it cleaned weekly. Parking is always a challenge with anything uptown, we know that. Right in the application that the vendors get, it says that if they're using trucks to load and unload, they can get there at eight, they can unload their goods, then they move the truck off-site, they can move it, you know, back up after. We've reached out to Schneider Electric to see about using the old Third Company parking lot. You know, there's some parking behind Heating. There'll be parking at the Town Hall when that's done. There's parking at the booth and the block lot behind South Street Pizza and stuff. So there is ample parking. The market is spread out over four hours, so even if you had, you know, two hundred people come, it's spread out over four hours. It's not like you're gonna get a mass of a hundred people that need to park at one time. We're also starting fairly small, you know, some markets have fifty or a hundred vendors. We're aiming to have a minimum of fifteen and a maximum of thirty, and we kinda came to that because we want it to be manageable in the beginning, but also, the average person spends about an hour at a farmers market. So, you know, if you have between fifteen and thirty vendors, they can spend, you know, three or five minutes at each booth that interest them. You start getting more than that, and it, in our opinion, kinda turns into chaos, so we're gonna try to keep it small. The vendors will be selected by us, and they'll represent the variety and the quality that we're looking for. All of the produce, plants, flowers, eggs, honey, cheese, all of that will be produced by the local farmers. As long as the farmer sells a majority of fresh produce, they may bring breads, jellies, and other foods that they have prepared to the market. Any non-farm products must be also made locally, and it must use the craftsman's own skill to make up at least seventy-five percent of the product. So, you know, if you had honey or some other things, or some other craft that are non-farm type products, they could bring them, but they still need to be in the spirit of an artisan or a farmers market. The vendors complete an application with us, they also complete the necessary paperwork with the Board of Health. We have their application incorporated into our packet. The vendors do set up and break down themselves, they can arrive at eight, and we expect them to be gone by one thirty, a half hour after the market closes. They have to commit to the entire season, the entire seventeen weeks, because we do want consistency. We want people to know that if they come every week, they can get the same bread, the same eggs. But they can share a booth with another vendor if they want. So if we have someone that specializes in early seasonal vegetables or strawberries, they could share a booth with someone who does apples and pumpkins, but they'd be, you know, they'd be in the same spot, and they would share the same booth. We're also gonna offer a free booth, once each season, to any local nonprofit that wants to attend as an educational organization for the purposes of educating the public, so service groups, groups that wanna teach about nutrition, organic gardening, sustainable living, conservation, local history, anything like that, they can come once a season and attend a booth for the purpose of educating the public. Our committee has really done a lot of research, we've gone to a lot of other farmers markets, we've gotten on a lot of newsletters, reached out to vendors, so we're not reinventing the wheel here. We kinda looked to see what worked at other farmers markets and what didn't, and we're trying to incorporate it into ours. So we all have, you know, different roles that we kinda play. So that's where we stand, and we're here tonight to get your permission to go ahead and have it on the Common every Sunday. If anybody has, did you guys get the handouts, the flyer and the map?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Extra if anybody needs them.
Jim, so this particular effort is one that benefits the community in a couple different ways. One is the fact that we're able to now provide local produce to the residents, which, of course, is a healthy living type of scenario, which a lot of people subscribe to today, and I know that people benefit by it. The second thing is that it actually serves as a really good economic development tool, that most people, if you talk to downtown consultants today, will tell you that having a farmers market is important in many ways, because it brings people into the downtown, and it generates activity in the downtown, which otherwise wouldn't be so active on this particular time. So nine to one is actually a good time, because it is a quiet time of day, a lot of folks go to church, things of that nature, but right afterwards, they'd be able to go there and, but taking some of the activities on the Common. The experience that I've had with this in my previous community was that it not only did it generate interest in the downtown, but it actually spurred some new businesses as a result of that, because people took an interest in some of the local shops and areas that were vacant, and all of a sudden, they said, you know, that'd be a good place to put my store in that location, or it just should have generated that kind of interest. So I see this as a really important step for the community to take in doing this, so I'm actually a big supporter of a farmers market. Paige and I have talked about this, it's a really important step for the community to try to take us to the next page of where we're trying to go with the redevelopment and re-interest in the downtown. So I'm grateful for the fact that you're going to do this. Deb, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give you fair warning, be careful what you ask for, because it's gonna be very busy doing this, and you'll find that, once it takes off, that it's gonna be a lot, so just be careful.
I am, and the best part of it is that I have a huge, well, huge, an extremely strong group behind me, so that if I can't be there, one of them will be. I understand what you're saying, and I take it.
I mean, in nothing but a supportive way, because I know that it's just, it's a lot to take on, and it does sort of escalate after a while, so just be cautious.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, got a couple. When would it start?
June 4th.
Fourth. And I know on Sundays, there's a lot of other entities that also do stuff up there. Is that gonna?
We've checked already with Marsha. There is nothing booked so far, yet that doesn't mean if someone were to wanna use the Common, they may wanna use it after one, when we're done, or it may be something that we can share the Common with, it may be something that we can just do a collaborative with. We're open to anything. This is year one, this is just baby steps.
Well, I know they've had sidewalk sales there and plant sales there.
Yeah, so we can work with anybody.
Great. Okay.
And nine to one's actually a good time, because it's more likely less to be conflicting with other entities that use that Common. Typically, it's after one o'clock anyways, for the most part, but as Deb says, I think there's plenty of room to accommodate other users. In fact, if you're already generating traffic in that area, it actually is probably good for their sales as well, if they're actually.
Yeah, I've been to a number of them. They're neat. They really are.
Of course, up north you go to them.
Very exciting.
As would be just as good, better.
I think it's great. Outstanding.
Thank you. We're excited.
From a financial perspective, you're gonna be charging a vendor to have a spot there?
We do. What we're doing is we're charging, is it ten dollars?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars a week, and they have to commit to the whole seventeen weeks. But we're hoping that that'll kind of, you know, we'll break even in the end. I mean, we're not doing it to make money, but if you don't charge anybody, if you just say people can come for free, you know, you don't get the level of commitment, and you gotta charge them something to know that they're committed and they're gonna show up, and, but we're not really doing it as a moneymaker, we're just...
And all the proceeds that they collect on that given day, it's all theirs, they're not giving a percentage back to the group.
Correct.
Okay. What is your feel so far? Do you have any that are already committed? Anybody?
Well, we didn't really dare commit, because you guys didn't give us permission yet. So we've talked to people that said, yeah, but we really kinda needed to know that we could have it there before we let them sign paperwork. So, but we have reached out to a few vendors that are very interested, but we needed to get by tonight before we could actually move forward.
And then, one final thing on the nonprofit booth, so each week, it'll be a different local nonprofit?
Yeah.
It's a good idea?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, if the Boy Scouts wanted to come, or the J.C.'s, or the Garden Club, or really anybody that wants to do something that would be, you know, fall under the guise of educational or anything like that, they're welcome.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, so for me, I'm a big fan of farmers markets. My favorite's in Charleston. They have one every Saturday. You gotta find...
We'll be competing with them. We'll have tips, though.
You gotta find the guy with waffles on a stick.
And you want us to get him up here in Charleston?
'Cause they grow on a farm.
I know.
But this is kinda what happens. This is kinda what happens, they evolve into different things. You have arts and crafts, and you have local produce. You're gonna get a lot of foot traffic, especially on the nice days. One of my concerns is, obviously, traffic. I would suggest designating parking for the vendors in one location, just so they're not coming from all different directions. So they have a place, they drop off, and they go to, just because the Common's one way.
Right.
And then, you know, with the foot traffic and, you know, the crosswalks, making sure that, you know, we may have to have a detail or work it out with Chief Baker, if we're gonna have somebody up at the Common anyway, you know, with church getting out and everything. That would, my only concern with this. Early on, we talked about this in the Economic Development Committee. We know how it spurs people coming to the downtown. We wanna promote that downtown's very walkable. We know there's parking, it's spread out, but there is parking downtown, and this will allow those folks to actually find out where the parking really is.
Right. I mean, we did do up a map that I think you guys got in your packet, and, you know, a lot of the businesses and a lot of the people that I talked to, they're from Foxborough, they know what it's about, and they said, look, we have kids, we'll park at the booth, we'll go to the playground, we'll walk up, we'll walk back down to the booth and go to the playground. So people that are from around here know, and they know where to park, and they'll manage it.
But really, if someone's going out of their way to buy vegetables and fruits, don't you think they'd wanna take a few extra steps before they got there?
You hope.
Not the waffle guy.
Or the candies that I'm trying to get made by the sisters.
Right.
Don't knock the waffles on a stick.
By the sisters.
So this is, no, this is great.
So the action being requested by the board is to approve...
Paige, did you ask, do you have something?
I do have a question. When you talk about the nonprofit, would there be an opportunity, for example, like on Founder's Day, I had a booth for the master plan, and then I think of the Downtown Business Association we're trying to plant, and would there be an opportunity for those type of groups to maybe occasionally have an opportunity to share what they're doing?
Absolutely. Yeah, anything that's educational for the community, we wanna have that, that's kind of the goal.
It's not technically nonprofit, but you certainly don't make a profit.
That's, I mean, that's the goal. When we say nonprofit, you know, 'cause we don't want a company coming in that's promoting our products or our marketing, you know, it's more just people that would be coming in to educate, to people to watch promote, anything like that, so absolutely.
Can you say something quick? So when they approached me to be on the committee, I said no, like, three times. Very persuasive, but there's a lot of excitement in this group. Reached out to Paige, and thank you Paige, she provided a town map, and it's pretty telling. My concern was traffic, and as Ed said, but parking, but if you look at the map that we put together, between behind Judy's, I mean Cindy's, and the booth lot, and Town Hall, and maybe in Vence's, there's hundreds of spaces, so I think that can be worked out. But being involved in the master plan, I heard farmers market, going to the small business, or the town down business group that Paige put together at the library a few weeks ago, one of the consultants actually put together boards, which we shared with the committee, that showed tents and setups, and I used to go to the one in Davis Square a lot, and it's surprising, they can set up a booth, and it's nothing more than a table and a small tent. The big stuff is someplace else, so, you know, so traffic, parking, bathrooms, and I think in police detail, I think it can all be worked out. My biggest concern, it was gonna turn into a big yard sale on our historic downtown Common around Memorial, things around there, but I know that's not what it's gonna be, so I wish you guys luck. I think it's gonna be great, and it's a trial. We'll do it for a year, and, you know, maybe it gets bigger, you know, it's gonna be telling, because people say, oh, we want business, you know, we want someplace to shop. If we do it for a year, and nobody comes from downtown, I mean, from the area, we rethink our downtown a little bit, you know, so.
You know, thinking long-term, and obviously, me living uptown and walking the dog, sometimes you take your life in your hands when you're crossing. My only concern is down the road, when there's a Sunday Patriots game, just to keep in the back of your mind, maybe that might be one of the days we might...
We end on September 24th, so that we could run into that if it was a preseason.
We might want a couple...
But not much, 'cause, well, I mean, the preseason are usually Thursday nights, you know, I guess, so, I mean, we might...
That might be the time we might need a detail.
And we've already thought or discussed on the weekend of July 4th, well, leading up to July 4th, many of them are closed, so.
Yeah, it's a good point, though, for September.
Okay, just FYI, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, this is something that we don't necessarily have to approve. You can approve these, right?
Well, it's 'cause it's a use of the Common.
Use of the Common.
Normally, if it's a one, a single event, it's a one-off event, I usually just approve it, but because this is for a serial event, every Sunday for seventeen weeks, and not only that, this is an opportunity to kinda get the word out.
Yeah, no, I knew and appreciated that, but I thought this was something that...
So if you, what would you say, that you concur and you agree with it, agree with the use, then I think we're done.
Motion?
No visits.
Move to approve or agree with the concept of a farmers market for seventeen weeks, Sundays, starting in a few more weeks.
Second. Motion made second. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor?
We always say this to you.
Is she nervous?
I voted. I always say...
Oh, you voted?
Even at the rec. meetings, if they can't hear.
Thanks, you. Thank you so much.
So the next item, which is the removal of the dog hearing, the, I've actually asked Kate Collins to join, you can join my panelists, to join us for tonight, 'cause it is a dog hearing, so I've asked her to join us, and then, plus, there is another item planned tonight, you talk about marijuana, which I think should be helpful for Paige as well, so I think it'll be good to have her here tonight, so. So I'd like to have Sue come on up, and so she can introduce the topic, and stop the...
Should we open the public hearing first?
Yes. So there is a public hearing notice, so I'll ask that...
I did not see that, I'm sorry.
It is, it is...
Wait a minute, give me a sec. I'm sorry, I didn't go down far enough. Okay. The Board of Selectment pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, S. 157, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, March 7th, 2017, at 7:15 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, Foxborough, Mass., to consider the restraint or removal of a pit bull mixed breed dog from the town of Foxborough. The dog is owned by Diana Ferreira, 23 Windsor Drive, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
So Sue, you wanna just introduce the situation, please?
Yes. On February 16th, Ms. Ferreira took her dog outside to go to the bathroom unrestrained, and it ran off the property and attacked a dog belonging to Stephen Grossman as he walked past her property. His dog was on leash. Ferreira's dog attacked his dog, and additionally, bit Mr. Grossman as well. The injuries were quite severe. The dog was ten days in and out of the hospital. It was not clear whether the dog would survive. He is, I'm happy to report, recovering well, and Mr. Grossman is recovering from his injuries to both hands and arm as he tried to prevent the dog from, Ferreira's dog, from getting his dog. This dog, a sixty-six-pound pit mix, had been declared dangerous after a very, essentially the same scenario in February, two days earlier, or two days, within two days, three years earlier, same scenario. Ms. Ferreira had the dog outside, unleashed, and it attacked a larger dog, which was injured. As a result, the board, there was a hearing, the board declared the dog dangerous. The order was that the dog should be leashed, always on leash, and wearing a muzzle if outside the premises. So Ms. Ferreira was in violation of that order when she took her dog out, and it did attack for a second time. The dog was euthanized at the end. It was, I took custody of the dog the day of the incident. It remained at the shelter for the quarantine and was subsequently euthanized.
So is the order on the dog that was supposed to be restrained, how long was that order in place, or was there a limit on that order?
There was not a limit on that order. I initially issued a, I could, an order, which would have been vacated had the selectmen not...
Confirmed it?
Made it permanent.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grossman has asked that we have a hold of hearing.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to take any testimony from perhaps Mr. Grossman, since he's here tonight?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, didn't know you were, sorry. Mr. Gross, you probably need to be sworn, because it is a hearing, so raise your right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Okay, thank you. Why don't you have a seat?
That won't be very long, and I won't repeat what Sue has said already, but I guess my concern is that this homeowner doesn't go out and buy another dangerous dog and bring it into the neighborhood. And I don't know if there's any law or any way that this can be monitored, you know, we'll certainly know as neighbors, I know a few of my neighbors are here tonight, because... You know, we'll certainly know as neighbors. I know a few of my neighbors are here tonight, because, um, she was always in violation. The dog might have been tethered, but it was never muzzled, and, um, and, believe me, I, I walk by that house twice a day, once in the morning, once at night. And, uh, right after the attack in 2014, for a while, I carried a stick, and then I stopped, just in case it came down. Uh, because I had no confidence that she was going to do the right thing, or anyone there that was going to do the right thing. So, um, my concern is, you know, there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and they have small dogs, and they walk their dogs, and, and that very easily could have been a child and, and their dog. And, um, I can't imagine what might have happened if it were a child that, um, was attacked. I mean, if I had fallen down, I don't, you know, it was snowy out at that time, I don't know what might have happened to me. Luckily, I didn't, and, and, and I'm okay. Uh, my, you know, my poor dog, um, was within inches of losing his life. Luckily, we got the dog off, and, um, you know, it's just very disappointing that you can't have confidence in what people are supposed to do. And so, I don't know if there's any rule or anything that you're aware of that can prohibit them from bringing a dangerous dog into the neighborhood. You know, they also have other dogs that they let roam free, and, you know, I think they've stopped now since this incident occurred.
I'll, I'll advise the board a little later on, but there, but there is a provision in the statute that speaks to a person who does violate an order, and what that, what that means, and so, and I'll hope council speak to that as well.
I'm more concerned for the, the kids that like to walk their dogs there, and there are probably three or four families that have small kids, probably below ten years old, and walk their dogs. Um, the other thing, I just want to thank the, um, Foxborough Police, they were awesome. Sean McKay, David Foscaudo, they're just awesome. Sue came out fantastic. I mean, we're really lucky to have people that, um, that work like that, and really care about what's going on. And they, they couldn't have shown more care and more compassion than they did. For myself, the dog, everyone around, it's just really great to have people like that in the town working for us.
Thank you.
That's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Questions from board?
Yeah, good.
Can I say something, or is that?
Yeah, um, well, give us one second, and I, so I think.
Thank, thank you for holding the hearing tonight. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Actually, I just have one question, because it showed up in the 2014 report.
Yes.
There is another dog there, and you said there's a few that, what type of dogs are they?
They're not dangerous, and I haven't seen them since this incident occurred. And they're, they're, but there is a leash law, and no one knows what's, what their dog is capable or not capable of doing. And it's important, I think it's important that people adhere to the leash law. I don't know what my dog's going to be like when I take him for a walk.
Yeah.
Again, I, I hope he's going to be okay, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you, and sorry for your ordeal.
Yeah, no, it's good. I'm just glad it wasn't a small child.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thanks, sir.
You might just want to accept any, any other testimony that anybody wants to offer.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Right, so.
You gotta come up, state your name.
Yeah, you'll have to do the same thing. You'll have to be sworn, since you're offering testimony. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
So, actually, I'm a neighbor as well, so I'm at 29 Windsor Drive.
State your name, state your name.
Oh, my name's Brad Palter. I'm on 29 Windsor Drive, and, uh, I'm actually running with the small kids. I have a seven-year-old that we walk, our Beagle. We've had her just about a year now, and we walk around that neighborhood too. And I would always see a dog just chirping and barking and not on a leash, and I, I never put it together until Steve had told me about it. And it really just concerns me. Um, and also, my daughter, um, has the bus stop two houses down that she goes every morning, so I'm just really concerned. And I don't know if there is a provision that can prevent someone who doesn't listen to the rules and things like that, so I just wanted to throw my, my hat into it too.
Very good.
Thank you.
Questions to the board, uh, is it John? Thank you. Anyone else? One more time, raise your right hand. Swear to tell, swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Hi, my name is, uh, James Evers. I live at 7th Thero Trail in Milford, Mass. My former residence was 27 Windsor Drive. I was the guy who was attacked the first time, three years ago. Um, you know, my, my dog underwent surgery. She's fine now, but, um, like Steve said with the stick, I walked around with a, a box cutter in my pocket for a year. You know, uh, these, these, these folks, uh, their, their dogs are constantly loose. You know, I'm kind of relieved, because tonight I was here to push for the dog to be euthanized, and now that it is, uh, it's kind of over for me. But, um, I'm with these guys, if there's any type of restriction from these folks getting a dangerous dog, because it's not the neighborhood that can handle it. It's a family neighborhood, and it should be safe for people. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so, for the board's information, you, you have a letter in your, in your packet as well, uh, from Mrs. Ferrera, who, who has indicated that she would not be attending tonight's hearing. So, you, you will not be hearing from, uh, the owner of, of the, of the dog that attacked, uh, the Grossman's dog. The board has, um, has a history, or the town has a history of this dog, uh, being declared dangerous in the past. Um, the, the action that the board would, would consider tonight would be that the dog would be considered again dangerous, and that, um, and also that the, um, the, the other item of consideration is the fact that since there was an order on this dog for it to be restrained and, and was violated, that the owner themselves could be, could then be subject to consideration for not being able to license another dog for up to five years. So, uh, that is an additional penalty that could be, uh, added to the, to that particular sanction, if you will. But I'll, I'll have town council, uh.
Question. What happens to her existing animals that are licensed?
Well, is I, are the existing animals licensed, is the question?
You know, I looked at, there, uh, I don't believe that there is a one other dog, um, a twelve-year-old Pekinese, that is currently, uh, either licensed under Diana's, uh, Ms. Ferrera, or her, in the past, it's been licensed under her sister. She's, has stated to me she has no other animals. I, I don't believe it, it's another family's member's dog, I do believe. There are, um, parents and, uh, three or four grown children living there. It, this dog has been a nuisance in the past, in roaming off the property and, uh, potting in other people's yards. It is, and maybe barking at people. It's, it's not a dangerous dog, but I'm, I'm, I, I don't, so, it's unclear who's. I, I don't believe it's her dog. It, yeah.
What, what's, can we limit, do we? Is it possible to limit the address, that no licensed dogs can be at that address? Well, well, she is the.
I'm going to defer that question to the council.
Because obviously, somebody needs to control the animals, whether they're living there, or they're guests, or somebody coming to visit. And obviously, there was no control with this one.
Right. Kate?
Certainly. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, there is a statute that governs dangerous dogs, Chapter 140, Section 157. And it gives you the authority, if you determine that the, the dog is a dangerous dog or a nuisance, once you've made that determination, you may then determine whether the dog may be, um, taken by the animal control officer. And, and part of your determination, if the owner has violated rules, is to not allow the owner to license a dog for five years. So, it, the statute doesn't address if there are other dogs living in her home, but it says you can certainly not allow her for five years, or whoever the owner is, for five years to license any other dog.
So, it's limited to the owner?
The owner. The owner of the, of the, of the dog that violated the, that was in violation of the order.
So, for instance.
Actually, it's owner or keeper. So, that broadens it a little bit. If she's, um, keeping dogs in her home that are owned by someone else or licensed by someone else, because it's her home and she's the violator, you could not allow her to have those dogs. Then, the issue becomes where the dog's going to go, because you want to avoid having to have the town take them and pay to kennel them.
So, if she has an existing dog right now that's licensed, and we tell her she has to remove it from the premises, we would be liable to kennel the dog?
Depending on who owns the dog, and if it's somebody who does have a home elsewhere, or someone who's just staying with her, those circumstances would come into play. But if the town decided that those dogs, um, that, you'd have to decide those dogs were dangerous to take them, that, that's another issue we would have to look into. The MSPCA does have rules and regulations about that, and it's possible that they might be able to assist. But the statute, the language of the statute is the owner or keeper of the dog is not allowed to license another dog for five years. It doesn't actually address what to do if they've already got a dog that's licensed. So, I'd suggest looking into who owns these other dogs, or licenses, or keeps them, and see if there's someplace else that they could go.
Well, the, the other, the other thing the board needs to consider here is that there, there isn't any evidence that the other dogs have been harmful or become a nuisance to anyone in the neighborhood. It's just this particular dog that was in question.
No, I thought, Sue, you said the other little dog was a nuisance too.
A nuisance, not dangerous.
Not dangerous, not dangerous.
I, I'm just curious, it may be something that council wants to consider, but I, I wonder if, it seems like it makes a pretty compelling case for potential injunctive relief on the basis of the public nuisance, uh, to try and control the activity of that household. Pretty compelling case with two vicious attacks, and the ongoing problem with a smaller dog that's a public nuisance, just something to think about.
That's correct. That would involve filing a complaint in Superior Court, but you would have a good case, um, against this owner, because the owner is not responsible for the animals. If the other animals are not dangerous, that makes less of a strong case. But you could get a court to, but again, the court would order the dogs to be taken, and the town would have to figure out where to put them and possibly have to pay to kennel them.
I don't know if everybody's clear on this point, but the dog that was in question has been euthanized. So, that's, so that's no longer a part of this discussion that we got, except for the fact that the owner has still acted, I suppose, and, and has acted in violation of the, of the previous order. So, that's, that's the remaining question.
So, can we, can we put a restriction on this owner that she cannot get another dog for five years?
You can't, you can't license one for five years.
License, license a dog for, for a minimum of five years. But she can still keep the existing dog, the one that's not a nuisance, is not a.
Not a danger.
Not a danger. Well, it's, it's a nuisance.
But it's, there's no, there's no violation that's being heard on that particular dog, so, until that becomes an issue, I think, you know, that's when you deal with that.
You could certainly do that. And you could also require that she, um, this may go to whether you have rules and regulations for penalties for not having dogs on leashes.
There, there are, and it, it, so, if a resident makes a complaint, um, that a dog is off-leash, I can cite, it's twenty-five, fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, that's how the, the, um, penalty goes. So, there, I have not, a complaint has not been made. I went back through my log in the past three years since the, since the previous incident, um, of that dog. It has not been brought to my attention that that dog was off the property. I'm not saying it wasn't, but it has. So, that is another way to motivate them to keep that dog on the property.
If I may, can I just ask, are you talking about the?
The nuisance dog.
Nuisance dog, okay.
Or, or the other dog. There was not a complaint made that the other dog was, that the owner was not following the order.
But the night of the incident, she didn't follow the order?
She did not.
So, you could, you could, after the fact, issue a penalty?
Yes.
A fine for having the dog off-leash?
Additionally, there is, um, by this statute, or, uh, is it 156 or 157A? You can, um, five hundred dollars for a first violation of an order.
Correct.
Up to five hundred dollars.
Yep.
So, to be clear, right, I know this is a lot of different things been, right now, that we, the dog that has, is in question, has been euthanized. It's no longer a nuisance to the, into the area. However, the owner has not acted responsibly, so to speak, because they, they obviously, the dog was in violation. There are two things that could be considered. One is to take a, an action that would limit them from licensing another dog for five years. And now, as I understand it, they could be fined up to five hundred dollars for a first violation, violation of, of the original order.
Yes.
To keep the dog on the, on the, on, uh, on restraint.
So, one is under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, and the fine would be the animal control officer's decision.
Under 150, did you say, you cited under 156, though, correct? Is that, is that in our regulations?
I have the statute with me. I don't, I only have 157, but.
Okay.
It's a long statute.
Right.
What about, um, medical expenses for Mr. Grossman's dog? Is there anything in any statute that?
That would be a private action.
Private action?
Civil action.
Um, it's, it's 157A, um. Uh, an owner or keeper of a dog who fails to comply with an order of a hearing authority or district court shall, shall be punished for a first offense by a fine of not more than five hundred dollars, or imprisonment for not more than sixty days.
Did that say from, excuse me, but did that say after a hearing in district court?
District court.
No.
I just heard that. What was, uh? Yeah, district court. A hearing authority or district court. Okay, so the Board of Selectmen being the hearing authority. An, an owner or keeper of a dog who fails to comply with an order of a hearing authority. So, you couldn't, after the fact, impose a fine, because your hearing is about that, that incident that night?
There was a hearing three years ago, that she was already sanctioned.
Okay, that's true, for the same dog. But yeah, so it's supposed to be if she violates an order of the board, then you may impose a fine of five hundred, so.
Which is what she did.
Two thousand eight order.
Two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand fourteen.
Hearing authority or district court, so it's punished for a first offense, not more than five hundred, or imprisonment. The Board of Selectmen can't do imprisonment, that's the district court. Okay, the rest is about other things.
Thoughts? So, in 2014, um, there, there was an order that said that the dog needed to be restrained off premises and muzzled. But there was also a commitment from, um, Diana Ferriera, that she stated that she was going to have the dog evaluated by an expert. Was there anything brought back to the town, or from the discussion, if that was upheld, or if that was followed through with?
We didn't ask for that. That was what she planned to do.
In 2014, in February?
Correct.
Okay.
No, we did not receive anything from.
Okay, because I, I remember the, the hearing and, and the case, and, and that was stuck in my mind, that there was going to be an expert evaluating it.
Did that, did the board order that, or did, or did?
She said she was going to do it.
She volunteered.
But then, when we, when we came up with our findings and, and came up with the, um, the penalty or the restraint, that was in my mind, that that was going to happen.
She, she was, I think, she was motivated, looking to not have the dog declared dangerous, thinking ahead that if she moved, this would be a problem, and was, I think, offering that, I will have the dog evaluated. Please, let's not declare the dog dangerous, and it didn't, it, it was.
Yeah, so we did, so we ended up declaring the dog dangerous, and as.
It, it didn't matter what the expert said, the dog was dangerous.
Okay. Thank you.
So, pleasure of the board is really two, twofold. One, you can, or threefold, you can take no action, or you could take, you could take an action to take a, a, a five-year limit on licensing of another, another animal, or another dog. And, or you can, and you can also, uh, impose a five hundred dollar fine.
Can I suggest a fourth option? I, I think she sent this letter in that said the dog was euthanized, end of story, where obviously, it's not the end of the story, since we have concern about the other dog, and, and potentially imposing a fine. If it's the inclination of the board to go towards a fine and three or five years of, of no more licensing, would it be wise to have Diana Fiera come back to here to present her case? Because what I'm afraid of is if we put a five hundred dollar penalty and it gets into court, she said, I, I, I could have rebutted that, but I didn't.
But she wrote a letter specifically saying she would not appear.
I understand, I understand.
I kinda thought that maybe she figured, okay, took care of the dog, there's no need to appear. So, I, I kind of agree with Jim. If we're gonna, I'm not opposed to putting any of these sanctions that we talked about, but I do think, um, I don't, um, my concern is, I don't think she knows the, the rest of the story on, on tonight. Um, I think she's thinking that she took care of the dog and she's all set, unless she was told otherwise.
Was she told that, that whether she, whether there'd be other, other penalties potentially?
I did, no, I did not make her aware that there could be other penalties.
So, I'm just afraid without that opportunity, there's gonna be an appeal and we're gonna have to be dealing with this a year from now.
So, we have the option to just continue the public hearing, repost it, notify her?
Yes.
I don't know if it would have to be reposted if it's a continuation.
Be a continuation, a continuation would not be reposted, right?
But put it on our next agenda and, agenda, notify her if she chooses.
What an opportunity to, to come in if she still wants to.
And then if she still doesn't come in, well, you never know how a judge is gonna decide. The judge could entirely decide, as Chairman Devell, or Mr. Devellis said, and, and say, well, yeah, she did send a letter, which is your evidence, that you gave her notice for due process, but she could argue she didn't know that there was gonna be anything further to it.
Yeah. I would agree with Jim then, I'd rather go that route.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we're, we're making accommodations for Ms. Ferreira. Yet we have neighbors that, that came forward at the same time. Now, we're gonna make them wait to see if something's gonna happen. You know, I mean, she was obviously in violation of, of the two thousand fourteen order. I'm not, I'm not so inclined to, to issue a fine, but I wanna make sure that, that this, this woman does, does not go out and get another pit bull. And I think that's what everybody's concerned is. So, I would, I would disagree with continuing it. She had the opportunity, it was posted, she knew there was gonna be a hearing, she chose not to attend. So, you know, sometimes you gotta, you gotta take the risk and, and, and deal with the consequences. I mean, if you're gonna post a public hearing and then you're gonna appeal it because you didn't show up because you chose not to show up, what's the sense of having a public hearing and posting it in the first place? So, I, I would rather just put the restriction, no licensed dogs for five years, call it a day. I, I think, I think that would be the appropriate thing for, for the neighbors to do.
Is it no, no licensing of new dogs?
New dogs.
Or the dogs that they have as...
New dog, we can't, yeah, we can't address that.
And did they have one or two?
One, the, there was a, there was a third dog that died, that has since died. It was an elderly wymeraner.
Okay, and the neighbors understood there's only one dog there? Uh, some reason through this, I thought there was two.
I saw, I saw two up until this incident, and just so you know, um, I was told from another Farah member that the pit bull killed the other dog. And it was just ever reported. And, and, I mean, I have a lot of detail on what happened. That it would, it bit the back, it was a very small dog, and it severed the spine and the dog expired. And that was never reported.
That, that was a question when, when my dog got hurt. This was the same story, it was like a, a chihuahua, but there was never any proof that happened, and they denied that it happened. So, good thing to use.
You know, I'm just actually rereading the public hearing notice and everything, and I think actually, um, we are covered because it says, this is due to the recent dog bite incident on February nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and a follow-up to the Board of Selectmen declarations from March fourth, two thousand and fourteen, is requested that you appear at this hearing. And then it also goes on to state additionally, please have all dog owners resigning at twenty-three wins a drive, attend the meeting on March seventh in order to address the matters of failure to restrain other dogs at this address. So...
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, um, rereading what she received from the town, I am actually comfortable moving forward tonight. I think we're covered.
And then it also pertains to housing other dogs, correct? She's responsible for, you know, if, if a family member brings a dog into her house, she's ultimately responsible for that, for that dog as well, and could be deemed a nuisance.
She lives there with her parents to be, um, she is one of, I think, four grown children.
Oh, so she's one of the four adults and she's living with her parents? Oh, I thought she had kids there that were the gr- grown adults. Yeah, I guess I, I agree with what you're saying, David.
Yeah, I mean, the letter that, that we sent basically describes everything.
Pretty clear, and she chose, she chose not to appear.
And she chose in writing, she sent the town a letter, so you just have that if you needed to prove that it was her decision not to come.
She did, she did consult with, um, an attorney too. Prior to the dog's euthanization, I was contacted by an attorney representing her, so...
I'd go one step further, I'm, I'm, my thought is, uh, I think a fine is in order for, um, you know, breaking that first order in two thousand and fourteen. So, yeah, I agree, we should, we should sanction today, but I, I think we should fine also.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have two motions. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have, we'll have two motions. One for the, for the five years, and then one for, uh, a fine for the violation of two thousand and fourteen order.
And just to, to be clear, that, and the board, I think the, the language says up to five hundred dollars, is that correct? Not to exceed five hundred dollars?
Not to exceed.
Not more than five hundred dollars for a first offense.
So, you can decide what that amount is, effectively. Up to, not to exceed five hundred dollars.
And is that under chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven?
One fifty-seven A.
One fifty-seven A.
One, one fifty-seven A, right.
Yes.
We'll, we'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? See you none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion to impose a five-year limit on no licensed dogs for Diana Ferreira.
Uh, due to the fact of, um, in violation of the, for the Selectmen order of two thousand and fourteen. So, move.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion?
Just under discussion. So, this is specific to this one person, but there's three other adults and two parents that are there. The dog that's there is not owned by her?
I don't believe so. I believe it's owned by her sister.
So, the motion that was just made, if one of the brothers or sisters or parents have a dog, why would she, why would she have, if she, if she wants to get another pit bull, have her brother registered under that house, right? Does this order doesn't address that?
How, how, that goes back to my question, can you, can you limit the address? And the answer was no.
What's, what's...
It goes to the owner or keeper, so you can't address it to the whole house.
So, we're kinda, we're kinda limited.
Would the injunctive relief against the owner of the house though accomplish the broader restriction?
Injunctive requirement? We could take, we could take a court order out and say, you know...
Yeah, you'd have to file a complaint in Superior Court and seek an injunction against everybody living in that house, based on the actions of this one.
Certainly done that. Involved in other cases where we've done that, and it seemed like the punishment would fit the crime in that case. To address your point, Jim, get other people that are acting irresponsibly in the household. No wonder the neighbors are horrified about what's been going on since two thousand and fourteen. It seems to me it'd be worth the effort, council and I could collaborate on an affidavit and a petition to Superior Court to get an injunction. Even if it gets refused, I think it's a good fake effort by the town to try and give the neighbors the relief they're looking for.
But can we still put the restriction on, on Diana Ferreira?
You should still make your vote tonight. This would be a separate action to take care of the other people in that house.
Correct.
Okay.
So, motion was made, it was seconded, we had the discussion. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, do we move to fine her, or did you say earlier that's up to the...
You, you can actually take an action, you can, you can make a motion to fine her, and then the third action would be to take, you know, to, to go seek an injunction.
Oh, I thought earlier it was said that only the, um, dog officer.
The, I did say that, but under the statute, if, if it's a violation of an order, and this board has, because you've already had a hearing and found the dog to be dangerous, she doesn't need to do the fining, you as the hearing authority can do the fine.
She violated our...
In two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. Um, I'll just put it out there, I'll move to, uh, fine, um, Ms. Ferreira, uh, five hundred dollars, uh, for being in violation of the, uh, two thousand and fourteen order.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, seconded, uh, under discussion. Do you think five hundred is too much? Do you think it's excessive? I mean, I'm sure that the neighbors who, who, who had, deal with it probably don't think it's enough.
I, I don't think it's too much. I, I'm, I'm looking through the report, and it was very detailed and very graphic.
I read the report.
But wasn't there a section in there that it was almost nonchalant, that there was laughing about it?
Yes, yes.
And that's what's stuck in my mind.
One of the householders were laughing at, uh, Mr. Grossman.
The mother.
The mother was, yeah. So, I, I don't think five hundred is excessive, considering, considering the, 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 the police that were there, the ambulance, our town, uh, dog officer, animal control officer, the expenses all around in, in... Well, you can go on, but I, I don't think it's excessive.
Okay, obviously, we, we need to send a message, a clear message. Um, okay, so motion was made, it was seconded, uh, under discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the third one would be the injunctive relief.
Move to have town council in chief? How, how else would I word that move? To look into...
To, uh, to craft a, uh, injunctive, uh, limitation on, on, uh, animals being, um, uh, housed under this, under this particular household.
Just to be clear, we'd have to file a complaint in Superior Court and ask for injunctive relief, and we'd have to go in and have a hearing and wait for the court to issue the order on injunctive relief.
So, is that how we should word it? For us, for, for us, for you to go forward?
Yes, you can't just... Correct, you can't just issue injunctive relief.
No, 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 I understand that. So, how best should we word it, so we get it correct?
To seek a complaint in, in, in Superior Court?
Yeah, to file a complaint in Superior Court seeking injunctive relief.
For that address.
For, or against...
Against.
The dog owners at that address.
Twenty-three wins a drive.
Twenty-three wins a drive. Okay, so move.
I love it. Second.
Well, luckily Caitlin's tapping away, so...
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion?
Uh, just under discussion. I, I, I'm not embarrassed to admit it, this is over my pay scale. I ju- if I don't understand it, I ca- I just hate to go in a direction where we're spending a lot of money, resources, going to court, um, with, without a chance of, of, of going anywhere with this. So, I, I just don't understand the process. What, what difficulty would we have bringing it all the way through versus having them come in here and saying, this is the direction that we're going to better, uh, better understand it? And I'm not saying because I have a problem doing it, I just don't know what's going on.
No, you, you, you yourself cannot issue a restraining order on the house. You can only restrain, you'll issue a restraining order on, on the own, individual owner of the animal.
Correct. The, the Selectmen can, because of the statute, yeah.
If I might further suggest, you could also not vote this right now and go into executive session for purposes of discussing litigation strategy at a future meeting, because it is an expense. That's why I said several times, you would have to have me file a complaint, go in for a hearing, and have the judge order the injunction, and then serve the injunction on the individuals, assuming that we get it. So, there's, there is an expensive file.
So, I mean, we run into this all the time, is we play our cards here out in the open, and then I'm sure there's gonna be people looking at it from the other side that are not publicly discussing this. So, I'd feel more comfortable if we go in an executive session to educate us a little bit, see a, a direction.
Yeah, I, I would like to, yeah, I'd like to understand the process and timelines and, and everything else, so...
So, you do it at a future meeting so that it's on the agenda, as you know, and just put something specific to the property, so that people have knowledge.
Yeah, potential litigation type thing on that, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right.
Good strategy.
I think this matter is considered closed at this moment.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for coming to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can stay, you can stay if you want, yeah, that's fine. Because it is, yeah, so...
Thank you.
Sue?
Sue?
Chief Baker. Just get that to Sue. There you go. Okay, great. All right. All set?
All set.
All right, so, um, I'll speak to this issue. Um, this is, the item before you tonight is something that the chief and I had talked about, actually, in the first few months of him taking office, and that was one of the things we talked about during, during the interview process, was to, um, to take the department and, into the next level of, of accreditation by, uh, looking at the state and the, uh, and the Kalia standards. The Kalia standards are the federal standards, the, 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 uh, the standards that are even higher than the state standards. The state standard is one, the Kalia standard is the highest standard you can actually go to. So, the chief and I talked about the process, because it is, it's a very in-depth process. It can take, you know, a year, year and a half, sometimes even longer, depending upon how fast the community can work through this process. Chief said, has had some experience doing this, and so he wanted to, uh, talk to me about the process, and, and I've endorsed the process that he's put forward. And so, what I'd like to do is have him, uh, sort of explain it, explain how he's, how he proposes to do it, and then, um, and then see if the board is, is willing to support it. I think the process that he's, he's designed here is actually, does make a lot of sense in the sense that, in the, in the, in the reason for doing that is that it just, it will help speed it along a little bit. Um, and the fact he's bringing in a person who's really well know, really highly knowledgeable in this area of developing policies and procedures, which are really important pieces of the, of the accreditation process. So, if, with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Baker, and he can talk to about the process.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, the intention here was to try and make this proposed process deferential to the authority that both the board and the town manager have under the town charter, uh, and to put a committee together that was nimble enough to allow us to bring in a technical writer, an expert, uh, to help us draft new comprehensive policies and standards that would meet the state accreditation process initially. Uh, and the process envisions creating this small committee, which would be Lieutenant Noonan and myself, the town manager, a representative of the board, subject to review by town council uh, for the content legality of these policies that would be produced, uh, and allow us to write them, subject them to review by this committee, implement them, and then produce empirical evidence that the policies are being adhered to and practiced by the department, which all of the accreditation bodies require. The other piece of it is the technical writer piece, uh, is important. And, uh, in a meeting that, uh, the town manager and I had with representatives of Patriot Place, uh, we discovered that there was a thirty thousand dollar commitment in the so-called Splitsville Agreement, uh, which was intended to help write policies and, and procedures for, uh, the Patriot Place Community Policing Detail that, uh, Chief O'Leary had created, uh, and to help us create new policy, uh, guiding our operations at Gillette generally. Uh, and we have had a discussion with them about, uh, finally getting those funds moved over to the town and expanding the scope of what that money would be used for, to include this drafting of policies for, uh, general application by the Police Department and helping us achieve accreditation. And the feedback was, uh, emphatically supportive, I'd say, uh, to make that transfer of funds and allow us to begin this process. So, again, just to summarize, we tried to craft a process that was deferential to everybody's authority, uh, that helped us get this done, uh, as efficiently as possible and move from drafting to implementation and audit, um, and get us finally on the road to moving the department towards accreditation and getting our policies and procedures and rules and regulations, uh, into, uh, the current modern standards that they should reflect.
I might just add that the, the chief also, uh, excuse me, the chief and I also discussed the fact that there would have to be union representation as part of this process. So, uh, because the fact that this, this, the changes in rules and regulations obviously impact the terms and conditions of employment, so they would have to, um, you know, work through that process with us collectively, so that we, um... um, work through that process with us collectively so that we, uh, so once, once it was done, it would, they would have, they would have, they would give their blessing to it before we proceeded.
Do you anticipate any, any issues with the, with the contract? With the changes in these policies and procedures?
Well, these are, this is operational, um, policies and procedures. Um, the contract speaks more to the terms and conditions of employment, but there are certain aspects of what go, what they do on a daily basis that will be regulated by the new policies and procedures. Therein lies the, the impact bargaining, if you will, of, of, of doing those types of things. So we would have to have those conversations with you in order to achieve that. It's happens, it's pretty common that this happens in spite of the process and, um, in fact, this procedure that the chief has laid out is actually uh, one that which does make a lot of sense to me.
Do you have a ballpark, um, estimate on, with the thirty thousand from Splitsville cover this?
Certainly. I, I'd expect that to be maybe one and a half times more than we need.
We'll hold you.
Now, um, this will get us to state level or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, uh, the, the two processes, the state accreditation standard, which, uh, I had been involved in early on back in the eighties when I, Chief in Southborough, uh, bringing that state accreditation process here is very different than the Kalia process. And the Kalia process is, um, arguably much more elaborate, much more comprehensive, much more expensive. In some ways more difficult for smaller agencies to comply with because there are implications for the use of part-time officers and so on. Uh, so I, I think the logical progression from my view is to seek state accreditation first and, uh, and try and make sure that all the work we put into state accreditation is relevant to Kalia accreditation. So we go this far and it's progress towards this longer path, you know, not do it in a way that's not related to Kalia accreditation. So we're gonna, uh, what I'd like to do is do the state accreditation with an eye towards Kalia accreditation ultimately.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm just curious what Kalia standards were.
Ed, are you back there? Do you remember? It's the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation, I think.
Commission, uh, you know, law enforcement agencies or something like that.
The Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation.
Commission for Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, that's what.
So i- in, in general terms, we're, we're here and we need to get here for accreditation?
Correct.
Could you provide a summary or an executive summary or a bullet item of what, what it entails to get from here to here? Is it A, B, C, and D? Because I, I think a lot of us don't know what it takes to get to that accreditation.
Sure.
Manpower or policies? And I, I see that, you know, we've had an accreditation manager since two thousand and five. When you say accredited, accreditation manager, is it synonymous to the accreditation that we're getting now? So for the last twelve years, we've had this person.
Yeah, and I, I think in fairness, it's a, it's an undertaking which is part of the reason that we're talking about bringing in outside resource. So I, I think it's been Lieutenant Noonan, uh, for that time and certainly Lieutenant Noonan and others have had quite a number of other things on their plate. And so i- the process, to answer your question, is more about policies that guide our operations. And so it's, it's part technical writing, uh, to make sure that those standards reflect modern police practices, that they comply with state law. Uh, it's part implementation, uh, to put them into practice to make sure that what we're doing in the field reflects those policies and it's part audit to make sure that, uh, we are, uh, following the policies that we put in place. So the purpose of accreditation is in part to create standardization between agencies so that a five-person agency, uh, in East Podunk is operating the same as a hundred-person agency in a larger community and everybody in between. So the goal is to make sure that you're operating according to modern police standards, everybody's operating in a consistent fashion, especially in the areas of high-risk, high liability operations like operating police cruisers, the use of deadly force, you know, those kinds of things, search and seizure. Uh, some of the high-risk, high liability areas that police departments deal with. So with the outside resource, um, this will accelerate the pace of this march towards accreditation significantly because this person's focus will be on writing, uh, the basic standards that both the state accreditation and Kalia accreditation require. So they have subjects, um, that are mandatory subjects for policies and, um, I think our target initially is going to be in the area of seventy-five or eighty operational policies. Uh, the other purpose of it is many police departments, including ours, um, chiefs issue general orders. We have rules and regulations that guide code of conduct. We have policies and procedures on those high-risk, high liability areas. And the purpose of accreditation is to bring all that stuff together, uh, so that you don't have multiple pieces of the puzzle. Uh, it's all captured in the new policy and procedure manual that is part of accreditation.
Okay. So would it be possible to get a summary of what the accreditation would entail, where we are and the steps to get there in, in general?
Oh, sure.
Because we're not gonna hire a consultant to, you know, before we make a decision, but do the best you can with that so we understand it?
Oh, absolutely.
And then if we're cross-referencing, when we did the negotiations with Splitsville, there was a dollar amount or there was a scope in there. If we're just gonna add this on there, just give us some idea of what the costs are gonna be to do that, plus where the, those funds were going to go. I know it's not apples to oranges because it changes over time, but I don't want to be giving away something that we were anticipating to get from those funds to do the accreditation and then a year from now, we're, we're at a loss on that side.
I think the goal was to actually achieve both.
I think so.
But it, it's, yeah, but there's no dollar amount here and it was a few years ago when we went through that. So I guess just some more information I, I'd be looking for.
Sure.
Are there any, if you get state accreditation, does it open you department up to grant opportunities and stuff like that? What are the other benefits?
No, uh, it, it isn't to that point yet where a state agency would say, in order to be eligible for state grants from the Executive Office of Public Safety, you have to achieve state accreditation. That, that is not happening at the moment.
Okay, so.
But it is all voluntary at this point.
Does this, does this help us in a potential lawsuit where you're, you know, viewed as, well, your policies and procedures weren't correct and you can come back and say, well, look, we, we are, we are state accredited. We do have, uh, accredited policies and procedures. Here's our manual. Everybody, uh, adheres to these guidelines. Doesn't that help us?
Absolutely.
Because I know, you know, you get bits and pieces everywhere and you go to a court case, oh, well, it's, it's over here or it's over there and.
Well, the difference is that you're following standards that are, that are, that are accepted, industry, industry practice standards. And as a result, um, that tends to, tends to support a case more than, more than hurt it.
So you know, you know pretty much where, where the deficiencies lie and, and where the, where the meshing has to, has to come together?
Sure. So if I understand Jim's question, you're looking for that roadmap to basically say, here's where we are today. Here's where this process is gonna take us. What's the cost and how does it fit with the language of the Splitsville Agreement? Yeah, like, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Do you need anything else from us tonight or?
No, this is the, we, I promised the chief I'd get this in front of him because we've been working on a lot of other things and I just, I want to get this, this kicked off so we can get this started.
Uh, if I could, so we, the idea would be to come back with the information that you've requested and then ask the board to take action at a, at that subsequent meeting?
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you can get it to us in advance and let us, let us review it.
Sure.
We don't like getting stuff the day of the meeting.
Sure.
Bill knows that.
And if I could address.
Or in the hog way.
If I could have just addressed one other, uh, issue, I think a, a couple of you at least may have gotten inquiries from citizens about, um, ICE making requests to local police departments. So I just wanted to speak to that briefly if I can. As far as I know, uh, the ICE, uh, civil enforcement component had made a request in writing, mostly to larger urban departments in the greater Boston area. So I was with all the major city chiefs today and I know Revere and, and some of the greater Boston departments got that letter. So we have not gotten such a request. I don't anticipate getting such a request. Uh, I subscribe to the theory that the local police should not be the enforcement arm of ICE. Uh, so we will not be housing ICE detainees in the Foxborough jails. And, and I just wanted to make that clear that that's the current status of that. There is a slightly grayer area and that is when ICE comes in to do an operation and requests, uh, backup from the local law enforcement. Some so-called sanctuary cities like Chelsea are not providing, uh, any response at all. To me, if it's a federal law enforcement agency and they ask for backup, um, I would not be inclined to run to the other side of Foxborough and hope for the best. But we would not insert ourselves in the operation. But we would probably play some kind of a role to be in the area in case things went bad and had a negative impact on our residents and people that live here in Foxborough. So the, the bottom line is that whatever request they're making to the larger urban departments has not been made to us and we would not, uh, anticipate cooperating with that kind of a request anyway.
So, good, it's, yes, answer, ask a quick question on that. So, uh, you, you probably got a lot of the same emails, all the same, but with different names on it. So you're saying, um, we have, formally have not been asked to, um, hold detainees?
Correct.
And you're saying we won't. If we are asked, is that under your purview or town managers or selectmen to say yes or no? Are you, are you saying you're in a position to say, no, thank you if they ask?
I think I am.
You are, okay. And so that's what your position is, is it gonna be no, okay? Thank you.
Clear enough?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You might not want to go far out for this next one.
This is the, uh, marijuana, marijuana discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So Paige, you wanna join us? So the, the last meeting that the board had, um, Paige was here to, uh, give us of an overview. She's been a little healthier than she did last time. That's good news. So we really appreciate the work that she's been doing on this issue because it's been a, a hot topic across the Commonwealth. It's sort of changing on a daily basis. So, um, there are different options that have been, uh, avail, made available to folks. Kate's been following this as well, uh, at this, uh, on the statewide level to see what's been going on. What's, what are, what different agencies and different, um, legal advice has been given on this particular topic. Um, and so we're at the next, next part of this discussion to see what's the latest piece and what actions this, does this board, is this board comfortable with taking? One deadline that's actually coming up fast, which you really need to take action if you're going to consider doing it, is to put something on the, on the ballot. There's a ballot question. That would have, that would have to be taken, I think, rela- relatively quickly. So, um, the second, the second two items would be zoning issues and the other one would be a, uh, an outlined, uh, bylaw, a mor- moratorium, if you will. That would, that would address that issue.
Can I address the timing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And I have talked with Paige and we have worked out and reviewed, um, some draft bylaws. I don't know what direction you're planning to go, but I have been working with a lot of other communities. The timing of this is really not as imminent as we're being led to believe. The Attorney General just reviewed a bylaw that was, uh, sometimes our vote in the Westboro voted one today. I don't know what the outcome was. I didn't have a chance to follow up, but West Bridgewater, special town meeting in December, approved amendments for a temporary moratorium. And in that, they didn't do a ballot question yet, but in that letter, the Attorney General says, uh, amongst other things, first, the town must by ballot determine whether it will issue licenses for recreational marijuana establishments and marijuana retail, retailers. And second, by ballot, that cannot occur before November sixth of twenty eighteen, which is the next state election, as to whether, uh, to allow the onsite consumption of marijuana products should the town decide to allow licenses for such facilities. So there are some decisions to be made, but for two reasons, it's not as imminent as initially people were worried it would be. And, uh, uh, the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association and others have written letters to the, um, legislature to ask them to hurry up and make some decisions on the regulations and whether they're gonna be changed. They've, as you probably are aware, they've extended the deadlines for applications. So no applications can even be made for retail marijuana until October of twenty eighteen. So it's less of a rush than it was because everything's been extended and the regulations might change. We're hoping that they do because there are some things that are really conflicting and uncertain about them. So the legislature might make some changes that would affect any votes that are taken at the ballot and you might have to redo them anyway. So the timing being.
To clarify though, the, the November eighteenth, November twenty eighteen election, that's for the onsite consumption date. That's the only one tied to that. So I know, I agree with everything you're saying, but just to clarify, the other one is not tied to a state ballot or state election.
That's correct. It's just the language that I read for onsite consumption.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want, you want to begin and just talk about some of the?
Sure, um, well, as I said last, uh, meeting, um, I went to a seminar and I heard about the Westboro, um, ballot, uh, question and that had just sort of developed because originally people were sort of seeing that, uh, November two thousand eighteen date, thinking that was the date. But once they parse it out, you see you can actually do a ballot now. So, um, wanted to find out if this is something that the Board of Selectmen wanted to pursue now. Just to clarify, we also have on the warrant for town meeting, uh, moratorium language that Kate's already reviewed. So we have that on there. So at a minimum, we would have a moratorium. So like Kate says, we're not in a rush. It's just that, um, you know, we only have an election twice a year. Next year will be, you know, May of twenty eighteen will be a little closer, so at that time, we weren't sure whether it was more critical timing wise. So I didn't know, and the fact that people were saying, oh, well, Foxborough didn't support question four, albeit by a very, very slender margin. But then the question becomes is, do we want to even see if there's an appetite for prohibiting it outright? And then we don't have to worry about, you know, moratorium really just gives you time to plan. So we'd still be spending time on planning for this use, um, all the while we would be having the benefit of the new regulations. So it's basically to sort of test the waters right now. I'm actually not even advocating for a ballot. I'm just more saying this is an opportunity and I think you guys are the ones who get to make that decision. And, um, certainly I think we have more time. So if we want to take a breath and just go ahead with the moratorium, that's an option. But if we want to, as Ginny said, nip this in the bud, that's an opportunity as well. So, uh, it's really on your plate. And I, I did provide some information after the last meeting. Hopefully you've had a chance to, to review some of it and, uh, we can, we're here for questions as you, uh, think about it.
So, if I can interject again, um, there are a number of different things you can do. One of the towns that I represent doesn't know what they want to do yet, so they asked for model bylaws of all the different options. You can, as Paige said, you can do a moratorium. You can have complete prohibition, which is not usually allowed under statutes. They usually say you, you have to put it in one section of town. This statute does allow for a complete prohibition. You can also have, it, it says you can have either general bylaws or zoning bylaws. I recommend zoning bylaws because that way you can determine where, if you decide that you're gonna go ahead and allow some, you can determine where in town and you can be as specific or not specific as you want. Um, and then finally, it allows you to have one fewer retail marijuana dispensary than, I'm trying to say the math without, than one less than twenty percent of the liquor licenses that you have in town. So you count up your liquor licenses. One of my communities counted, they have twenty liquor licenses.
That's not a good announcement.
That wouldn't help us here, I don't think.
Not all liquor licenses or just packet stores?
All liquor licenses.
That's not gonna help us here.
All alcohol, yeah, so that might not work, but it's one less than twenty percent. So in their case, they had twenty. I think it was twenty. No, I'm sorry, they had nine. So twenty percent was one point eight, which they rounded down to one. So they're gonna have one. If they go that route, they haven't decided yet. So those are the, those are the various things that you can do.
So the, the moratorium gets us to where?
Uh, June of twenty eighteen, although I don't know if there's any ability to go. I wish we could go till the fall of twenty eighteen, but we don't know yet whether the Attorney General's office is approving that. So far, they've only done June of eighteen, I believe.
Yeah.
So, June.
Is that because it'd be voted in in May of two thousand seventeen? Is that why it's, it's a one year, pretty much?
Yeah, I think it's about a, a one-year moratorium. That's about, they, they, because it's really intended to give you time to plan. So they don't usually tend to do long ones because then they all know what you're really doing, which is just delaying me something.
It's inevitable.
So that moratorium is voted on at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have a, a place holding for that.
Actually, we have the language because Kate actually has already proved that. So we, we have that ready to go.
And we have that right in front of us. It's seven point six, point three.
Yeah, is that the, um, moratorium? I've written so many different little bylaws at this point, I can't keep them all straight. I actually have two seven point sixes. One is a moratorium and/or one is a prohibition.
Yeah, this says temporary moratorium.
So going down the road, is, is this a moratorium on sales of, of places that are looking to get licenses to sell marijuana?
Yes, yeah, it doesn't have anything to do, Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, with the home. You can still grow at home and we're not affecting anything to that. It has to do with, I believe, the retail, the cultivation, you know, whether it's just producing it in a factory and never selling it or whether it's actually going to a retail location and selling. Because some communities want the industrial process, you know. Because some communities want the industrial process, you know, they're actually saying, "Oh, this is tax dollars, we can negotiate and get, you know, a use in their industrial park and no one would ever know it was there." Although that's not true, because I live in Franklin and we have one and there's a smell issue. So, but they're dealing with that, but, you know, everybody, that's what everybody says, is, "Oh, you'll never know." But they are, we are dealing with it in town. I don't smell it, but I've heard that you can smell, so there is an issue, I don't want to say that there isn't, but, you know, that's a tax, that's an industrial process. Then there's the other question of whether, you know, you want one downtown or out on Route 1, somewhere where someone can go buy the marijuana products. And I think the big fear with that, that I've heard collectively, is, are the edibles and the kids. You know, and I mean, I went to a seminar where they passed out samples of them. And, you know, I mean, these things were just pretzel nuggets. If they weren't in a package, they would look like any pretzel nugget you and I would buy at the grocery store. So I think that's, the scarier part is thinking about that being introduced. Now, of course, it could be right over the town line, but the question is whether you want those sold in town, so.
Good information.
And that, and that would be via ballot question?
Yes, the prohibition is done through a ballot question.
And that could be done when? Ballot question?
It could be done in May. We have our elections in May, so it'll be May.
But if they're, if they're changing the legislation, then that, that vote may have to be revoted if they change the legislation.
That's correct. That's why we're saying, I mean, some towns want to go ahead and get it done, but there's not really any rush, because it's quite likely that the regulations are going to change.
Yeah, there's no sense of-
But I question though, I mean, I'm not challenging it, but it's so general, it's, "Shall the town prohibit the operation of all types of marijuana establishments as defined in General Laws 94G, including," and then it lists cultivators, testing facility, product manufacturers, retailers, or any other type. That seems so general that, I mean, there's a, I would think there's some chance too that the change, I mean, unless they're going to change the types and the classifications, I suppose, there's probably a chance too that the changes wouldn't affect that, because it's so broad, but certainly could.
Right. The only one that you don't want to vote now is the onsite consumption, because the AG has already said you can't vote that before the next general election.
So, if we go the moratorium route, what is the town's, what are we going to do between when we vote it and a year from now? We going to put a committee together to look into everything? What's the process?
Continue to evaluate the laws as it evolves.
Yeah, watch that. Because right now, we don't know what's going to happen. Well, that'll be a decision for the community to make, of how you want to handle it, you know, in that ensuing year. Do you want to figure out whether you want it? That's, in one way, why I like the ballot now, because it's almost a temperature read, you know, I mean, we don't know whether people want it or don't want it. And maybe there's, you know, not strong support for a prohibition. If that's the case, then it's like, take it to the next level and where do you want it? And is there, you know, what level? Do you want retail? Do you want the more industrial process cultivation? Or, you know, if the community supports a prohibition, then it's like, we don't have to waste any more time on it, kind of. So, that's the, the one benefit to that, is it, you know, we have been spending a considerable amount of time on it. Granted, if we do the moratorium, that'll give us, the hard thing about moratorium is oftentimes we just go, "Oh, good, we're done," and we kick back our heels and then it sneaks up on you, so it's, you feel like the pressure's off, but it really isn't, so.
We could conceivably do both, right?
A moratorium and then later a prohibition, yes.
Well, it would be, the election would be before the town meeting. Get the temperature and then, kind of have to do the moratorium anyways, because nothing can happen until October of 18, no applications.
Correct.
So it's almost, almost no need to do a moratorium, because nothing can happen.
Yeah, and the moratorium's only in effect until June 30th.
Yeah.
So you have that July, August, September window anyway. But I, I kind of like the idea of putting on the ballot now, gauging the temperature, and that gives us time based on what, what the outcome is, if the town says, "No, we want it." Alright, well now we got to look at zoning and see where we, you know, where is it the least intrusive.
So you probably would, if you, you'd probably put the ballot question and also put the moratorium on at the same time, because if one passes or fails, I guess then the question would be that, what's the next step? And you need the time to plan anyways.
Oh, yeah.
I would probably recommend, I mean, right now I have it written, that we would have the moratorium and the prohibition on the warrant. And it'd almost be, that if, depending on what happens tonight.
Well, the prohibition would be the ballot.
Yeah, but then you have to actually add it, so, town clerk, been working with him.
The one that after it's voted on.
Yeah, you have to, so the language needs to be voted on by the selectmen, then it needs to be vetted by town council, put on the ballot, and then it also needs to be put on the warrant as article one, or question one. So, just need to make sure we cover that. So you'd end up with it in, on that, but you might also, since we won't know the outcome of the ballot in time, you'd have the moratorium on there as well. So you might have two articles where you'd only take action on one, you could just table the other one, depending on the ballot outcome.
But isn't, isn't the, the moratorium a non-factor, because of the timing?
Pretty much, yeah.
So, I mean, we can put it on, but it's, it's almost, I don't want to, I don't want to confuse people, thinking that they're voting, voting for a moratorium that really doesn't have any impact.
Right, true.
Yeah, because it's a moratorium anyway.
Yeah.
But for the, gauging the temperature.
Right.
Right.
And I think when we first drafted the moratorium, they hadn't done the six-month extension, so we're just, it's literally changing by the week right now.
You'll gauge the temperature leading up to it and the result of the ballot.
Yeah.
And how long does it take to, to get the results?
A day, right?
A day.
Yeah, that night.
So, I mean, there's no, there's no time lapse, you know?
And it will be interesting, I mean, I mentioned at the last meeting, we don't know how many people will come to the vote and whether this will get people out to vote or whether it won't. But, you know, it is a different election, being just a local election as opposed to a presidential. So it will be interesting, I mean, it'd be kind of a social question being answered.
What's the pleasure, what's the pleasure of the board?
I would, I would favor, oh, chief, actually, former chief, retired chief. By the way, welcome, good to see you.
Thank you. I specifically came up tonight to talk about this issue. I was against the marijuana bill that was, or the law that was submitted by the marijuana industry. I guess I don't have faith in businesspeople anticipating a great economic opportunity. I really feel strongly, and certainly council has provided additional information, that we should have something as a ballot question, where we have a greater number of people that vote than actually come to town meeting. And I think that, given what I'm seeing, not in a direct line, as Chief Baker has to deal with, but information about highway crashes and what's happening in other states that have so-called decriminalized and created recreation uses of marijuana, the increases in other types of incidents certainly make me very concerned as a resident, as a parent, and as a grandparent, especially in light of the edibles that are easily confused for a young child. So, I'm asking the board to put something on the ballot and have that backup, in case it doesn't pass us, asking for at least a one-year moratorium, so that we can see what's going to happen in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks. So, we go back to the moratorium. Is it really a moratorium? And I, I completely agree with Chief O'Leary, but my, my only concern is that we would create confusion at the ballot and say, "Well, I'm not sure, I'm just going to vote for the, for the moratorium."
Well, they won't see the moratorium at the ballot, that's the good thing. It'll only be the single question at the ballot.
Okay.
The moratorium and the prohibition would be at town meeting. And one, we'd know which one we were going to do in advance. In fact, we could probably have AdCom sort of write that in their reports, you know, "This will be tabled due to the ballot results." So hopefully that would reduce the confusion. And then I don't know, Kate, if we want to be sort of the cutting edge of the forefront of it, is maybe we try a moratorium until December of 18, in light of the, the fact that it's not coming onto line till October. I mean, it just doesn't seem, or maybe we do it to that six-month mark, or, you know, a month, no, it doesn't even make sense.
You could say it to the 18th and the worst they're going to do is put it back to June.
Well, would they say no outright, or would they cut the date back?
Probably cut it back, right?
The AG's office interviewing it?
Would they ever put it back to June, or would they just say no?
They don't usually rewrite it for you, they just tell you either yes or no, or be careful how you implement it.
Well, the moratorium that's in front of us is through June 30th of 2018, correct?
Yes.
And you said, "Nothing can happen, no applications can be made before October of 2018."
Right.
So, the moratorium is-
There's some weird little timetables, but yes, that's kind of true. There's some weird things, like if certain licenses aren't issued and 70 licenses at a certain time, but-
Yeah, so they, I mean, nobody can do anything in that period anyways, so why have a moratorium? Right, am I reading it?
That's correct.
Yeah, so-
But the ballot question would be on the prohibition.
Yes.
And that's where you would be gauging the temperature.
Exactly.
To then know what to do.
I'm all fine for that, but the moratorium, if, if I wanted to open up a recreational marijuana place, I can't do anything until October of 2018. I can't even apply for anything. So this moratorium expires three months prior to that, so the moratorium does us nothing.
Assuming everything stays equal, but does the legislation have an ability to say, "It's not going to be October 18th, it could be May."
Well, that's, that's the big question.
But would they even move it up closer, though? They wouldn't move it close sooner, right?
Probably not, but it's so hard to know. There's been so much controversy about some of the provisions that conflict with each other, that, you know, Paige mentioned already that she went to one seminar on this, I'm going to one on Friday that's for attorneys around the state, talking about what we think is going to, what are the main provisions that need to be revised and what we think's going to happen with them, and then just to get education on the various bylaws.
See, just to clarify, so on this little timeline, it says July 1, 2018, "Cannabis Control Committee shall begin accepting applications from all applicants if fewer than 75 licenses are issued to experienced marijuana establishments on April 1st, 2018." So, we don't know what's going to happen, you know, I mean, we, we don't know, I mean, who even knows what all this means? So, that's why I think throwing a moratorium in there, while it doesn't seem to make sense in some ways, it's almost, feels like belts and suspenders, just in case some crazy stuff comes out while they're working through all these dates that don't make sense.
So, so what I'm hearing is that it sounds like, you guys can all tell me if I'm wrong here, but it sounds like there is support for a prohibition, for a ballot question.
Ballot question.
So, why don't you take them one at a time, alright? If you want to take that action, make a motion to approve a ballot question, be placed on this, this spring's ballot for consideration by the entire town, see what comes out of that vote, and then, at the same time, and then take up the second question as a separate issue, so don't confuse the two, because they're two separate actions. You can debate a little bit more if you want on the, on the, on the moratorium thing, but it sounds to me that that doesn't hurt you if you, if you, if you adopt it anyways.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt us, but it helps us either.
And we could wait till November to do that. I mean, assuming there's going to be a fall town meeting, November and May, you definitely, we still have time to deal with that. Maybe then we could do a year, and maybe then we get more time. I don't know if that would be transparent, but-
And you'll know what the temperature of the community is at that.
So we could maybe do that.
So the ballot question's been drafted and reviewed by council, could you, could you read that?
Sure. So it says, "Shall the town prohibit the operation of all types of marijuana establishments as defined in General Laws Chapter 94G, Section 1, including marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses within the town of Foxborough?" It'll be a yes or no vote.
Does that cover medical marijuana?
No, that's totally separate.
Separate issue.
Okay. And people growing it at their own house, under the current law, they can still do that?
Yeah, that's currently the law, yeah.
Because that's not retail, so you can't.
Let's move to, put that language on our, on the ballot for the next-
And the warrant.
Or it has to be on the warrant.
And the town, and the, and the town ballot.
And the warrant and the town ballot.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
This is my thought, I think on the moratorium, I think we should wait till-
The fall.
The fall. Because that, hopefully, hopefully more things will be cleared up, but it's not going to hurt us waiting till the fall.
I agree.
No, it'll take a hurt us.
And it makes it clearer, this, now we have just one marijuana item.
Great.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Great, thank you all.
Thanks, Paige.
Thank you.
Thanks, chiefs.
I think you're all set, but thanks for being here, actually, it was helpful.
It's worked great having the chiefs and council here.
That's good, yeah, yeah, I'm, yeah, I have to, but they're going to, they're going to call you. But thank you.
I'm on speed dial, Barrett.
Alright, thank you.
Selectmen's update, I just have, just want to wish the girls varsity basketball team, Coach Downs, good luck on Saturday, as they continue their march through the playoffs. Good luck, ladies.
And if you get a chance to go out, it's in Brockton Saturday, Brockton High School?
Two, two o'clock, I think.
I would also like to congratulate Coach Jack Martinelli. At the last school committee meeting, was approved to name the Ahern Athletic Field after, after Coach Martinelli. It's a phenomenal honor and well-deserved.
Very well deserved.
Yeah, good job at the school committee meeting, too. And I just want to shout out to Barrett, that was a great article on Steve Massey, who's retiring after a very long career and basically put Foxborough on the map for great musicians, so good job on that. And Steve, good luck.
It was a great story. So, it's, it's my pleasure to read into the record tonight, a letter I received today from Robert Kraft of the New England Patriots. And it addresses the support that the town gave to New England Patriots during its latest Super Bowl run. And the letter's dated today, March 7th, and it says, it's addressed to myself, and it says, "Dear Bill, on behalf of my family and the entire New England Patriots organization, I want to thank the Foxborough community for all its support during a very special 2016 season. One month ago, this past Sunday, we were fortunate enough to bring our fifth Lombardi Trophy home to where it belongs here in Foxborough. What our team accomplished in Super Bowl 51 will forever live in football lore. For me, part of its story will be the pride this community showed for our team in the week leading up to the Super Bowl Sunday, culminating in a town-wide rally on the Common the day before the big game. I was moved to see the Common filled with so many residents braving the freezing temperatures to cheer us on and wish us luck. Thank you all, thank you to you all for those who attended the rally. Your messages of support meant the world to us. Special thank you to Linda Walsh and the Foxborough J.C.'s for organizing the rally, Paul Farmer and Farmer Sign for printing the wonderful banners for the Common, Mike Weber and Foxborough Cable Access for filming the rally and sharing the video with us, the principals, students, and staff throughout the town for sharing their Patriot pride video with us, the Foxborough Police and Fire Department for their continued dedication, and your Board of Selectmen for designating Saturday, February 4th, 2017, as New England Patriots Day in Foxborough. We are honored and humbled by the loyalty you have shown to, showed our team. Townwide pride, townwide displayed, and townwide pride displayed in the week leading up to Super Bowl 51 truly showed that the heart of the Patriots Nation is right here in Foxborough. We, we hope to continue to make the community proud and thank you for the invaluable role that each of you play in our team's success, as Foxborough is once again home of the world champions. And signed by, sincerely, Robert Kraft." Very nicely done. Very nicely done. I would truly appreciate of that letter. And again, congratulations to the entire Patriot organization for making us truly one of the best organizations in all of football history. So it's really, it's a great, great honor to be the home of this, of the world champions, and hopefully they'll keep up that trend, and we'll look for number six in next year's round. So congratulations to them again. It's a very busy time of year, as everybody knows. Mary Beth is off for a few days. I'm actually leaving on Thursday for a few days to head south for a few days, catch some warm weather and maybe see a college baseball game, so I'm hoping that'll happen. The, there's a lot of stuff going on. We're still dealing with the warrant, the warrant hearings, and the warrant committees meeting, or the AdCom's meeting again tomorrow night. There'll be more discussion on the budget, of course, but when you have a full board, your full board will be back in play next, at the next meeting, so we'll take that discussion up again. Other than that, just a lot going on, and that's all I have for now.
Action, Mr. Oops.
All right, move to approve the town manager to enter into a lease purchasing agreement of streetlights and LED equipment.
So just by way of explanation of this item, this is something that town council has advised me that I actually have the authority to do this without the board, but the leasing company has asked that the board approve it because they, because it's in their, it's in their requirements, I guess, if you want the actual oversight board to approve it. So I respectfully request the board to authorize me to attend that agreement.
Second that.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Great, thank you.
Move to accept a gift donation of goods and services worth two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the Patriot banners on the town common from Farmer Sign.
Second. So again, just by a way of reference, Mr. Farmer donated a lot of his time and effort to preparing these banners. The town did contribute towards the cost of, towards the cost of those banners, but just strictly on the cost basis, he did, he actually donated all his time and effort into making them. So we have to accept that as a gift formally. There we go.
Just a minor correction, time and effort, but also, we had a number that we could have wanted to contribute.
Right.
The material was more than that, too, so he did contribute...
Even some more on top of that.
Time and materials to this.
Okay, fair enough.
Motion made. Second. Under discussion. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Very nice gesture, very well done, very well received.
And by the way, those that have disappeared, we still, some of them have returned, but we're still missing a few. And for those of you that have not returned them, we encourage you to do so because at some point, we're going to have to take appropriate action and recover them.
We did put tracking devices on it, and it's March...
Just to let you know, they will become active. So thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation of one thousand dollars to the Veterans Services for the Iraq Afghanistan War Memorial from the Boy Scouts of America, Foxborough Scowee.
Second. Well, thanks to the Scouts.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of ninety dollars to the Council on Aging to pay for half of January tai chi from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of seventy dollars to the Council of Aging for lock boxes from Anonymous and twenty dollars for programs from Lloyd Gibbs.
Second. Thanks, Lloyd.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation for a hundred and twenty dollars to the Animal Control, is that what ACO is?
Yes.
Officer, for animal control services from Anonymous.
Second.
Motion made. Second. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of four hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Council on Aging to pay for programs held at senior center as agreed upon from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation to Recreation of handmade crayon and chalk basket worth forty dollars for a raffle item for the father-daughter dance from Lindsay Hawes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation to Recreation of four tickets to Justin Bieber worth six hundred and forty dollars for a raffle item for the father-daughter dance from the Friends of Foxborough Recreation.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation to Recreation of six tickets to the Revolutions Game worth two hundred and forty dollars for a raffle item for the father-daughter dance from the Friends of Foxborough Recreation.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Under discussion. I can't believe Bieber tickets are worth nine dollars.
Sorry.
Believe it, believe it.
All those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation to Recreation of Stellar and Dot Girls bracelet for a raffle item for the father-daughter dance from Melissa Scott.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
And lastly, move to accept a gift donation to Recreation of United Skates of America Family Four Pack for a raffle item for the father-daughter dance from the United Skates of America.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
All right, Mr. Chairman, just one last thing I meant to mention is that the town hall project is moving rapidly at this point, where we think that we're still on schedule to move in sometime in May. So we're moving right along to the point where boxes are now being distributed to all the various departments so they can start packing their materials. You'll start seeing things come off the walls pretty soon, and in some cases already has. So we're getting closer.
Just make sure you don't take the wall with it.
It is a little scary. It was a little scary at times.
I know Ginny had mentioned it earlier. Is there any way to set up a tour for us of the building?
Yes, yes. We can do that. I'd like to do it maybe before your next meeting, perhaps. If you can try and remember that, Kate, to try and set that up.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know, that way, maybe meet at six-thirty or at six, whatever the date might be.
Before six-thirty.
Maybe. If anybody can be there before, at six, maybe? And take a tour of it, okay?
That'd be good.
I, the only challenge is that we might have to do it in the morning, only because the contractor closes the site at three o'clock every day. So we don't know if I can get it on site, but we'll have to, we'll work on that and get back to you, even if we have to do it early morning.
Yeah, come up with a good time.
They're there at seven, so we can get in there before you go to work or something. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Wait, Barrett. You were so quiet tonight, I forgot you were here.
Well, you know, I try to let you guys do your business, but I actually have a lot of questions. But don't worry, it won't take so long. So in terms of the pot timeline, Bill, you know this, when does it come into, when does it come into effect for retail if there isn't a moratorium? Exactly. Wasn't totally crocking that.
They have not determined that there yet. No, it has not determined.
So, so, but in terms of, but a number...
Regulations are not clear yet.
Right, because the number of the selectmen were talking about how a moratorium wouldn't necessarily matter at this point.
Because right now, it says, it's, the regulations are, there's moratorium in terms of sales until October, October two thousand and eighteen.
So until October of two thousand?
At least until two thousand, of October two thousand and eighteen at this point.
So, yeah, so basically, yeah, that may, okay, that's, that works. October two thousand, October next year?
Two thousand and eighteen.
Not, wow, that's a long time.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of regulations going to be developed for that.
Definitely. Okay. And then also in terms of the timeline of the dog stuff, so the initial, the public hearing thing didn't mention, mentions if the dog was still alive? How, how did it come about that the dog was destroyed pre-hearing?
The dog was voluntarily euthanized.
Okay, so the owner agreed to euthanize it before this hearing happened. Okay, that would make sense. Can I, I didn't get the, I just got the agenda and not the full packet. Do you think I might be able to get the packet either in hard copy or, especially with the hearing stuff, because there's a lot with the dog stuff?
You're not on board docs?
They did not, nor, they sent me board docs when you guys were first initialized, and I loved board docs, but I didn't get a board docs till like this week.
They emailed it to you, the packet.
I, I...
Friday, so.
I didn't, I got, so...
I can double check.
Double check. The packet wasn't attached, attached. I'll, I'll show you, I'll look at it.
You can talk with Kate.
Yeah, I'll talk with you.
That's not an issue.
Is the moratorium off the ballot? I mean, is the moratorium going to be off the town meeting warrant, since you guys talked about?
The board decided that they would, they would hold off until the fall town meeting to consider the moratorium.
So you're going to be striking it from the, from this, from the May town meeting?
It's never on the May town meeting.
As a placeholder, it was.
It was a placeholder for it.
I remember my exciting, exciting measures. And is the tour going to happen next week, or is it going to be happening?
We don't know, because I got a check with Bill Caspar, who coordinates that with the contractor, so.
Excellent, very good. You can also send me a copy of the Kraft letter if it's not in the packet.
Yeah, you can probably take this one if you want.
I actually love it.
Like a digital one tomorrow, because we might want to print it in the conference.
No, it's a great, great letter to print.
Yeah, if we have the room, we'll sort of print it. But yeah, no, and then it's the last thing in terms of the tour. If it's possible at all to make it happening, happen before, on a Monday or Tuesday, we can actually go do a ride along with it and put it in there. But yeah, you guys do what you need to do.
Okay.
All right, that's about it. Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.